This is a special meeting of the Bethany Board of Finance. On March fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, being held in the Selectments Conference Room. Present for, as members of the board, we have John Rothowski. And Lars DeMander online, we have Kathy Barone, I'm here, Sean Hook, so I'm the chair. In addition, we have our auditor, John Acavelo, we have our first select one, Apolico Francesco. We have our Leslie Bachechka-Lupi, our finance director, we have our Director of Parks and Rec, Janice Howard. And we have the Commissioner for Parks and Rec. Nick Holmes, and then we have our Secretary Barbara Cowery. So, this is a special meeting. So, we can't take anything under discussion that is not on the agenda.
It's Elizabeth, she's joining virtually.
But the record now show that Selectman Lizapell has joined the meeting. However, I think that because of the length of the agenda, it's going to be appropriate to shift some items in the agenda towards later in the evening, should we potentially get to them. But the first item on the agenda is the presentation of our audit and what it findings by our auditor, John Acavelo. The floor is yours.
Okay, we'll start with the bigger report. Page five of the financial statements speaks to the opinion. The opinion has changed in first previous years. The opinions are at the top of the page, on page four, and then on page five, it gets into more about what in audit in accordance with governmental auditing standards are. Because a lot of people really don't understand what we do as far as auditing goes. But as far as the opinion on page four, it starts on the top of the page. We've audited financial statements and governmental activities. Each major fund, the aggregate remaining fund information from town of Bethany as of and to the year ended, six thirty twenty-two. And it talks about what's in the financial statements. In our opinion, the financial statements are presented fairly in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards in the United States of America. A lot of this stuff, I'm gonna, I'm gonna paraphrase because I just wanna get to the highlights for you. And if there's anything else that you wanna talk about, please interject and we'll, we'll discuss it. From there, moving, moving on to page twenty-three of the financial statements. Shows a summary of the changes of revenues, expenditures, and fund balance. There was, there was a deficit of nine hundred and forty-four thousand dollars for the year ended. I believe that was anticipated that there was going to be a deficit for the year. There was a special meeting, I believe, also that addressed that as far as.
One second, for the record, Selectman Don Che has joined the meeting.
The financial position for the town of Bethany is, is very strong. There's plenty of cash in, in the, in the financial for the year ended, six million dollars as of June thirtieth. With that said, liabilities are only one point six million, so there's a very strong current ratio for, for the town. Really, the most important schedules are in the back of the financial statements, but these are the summary of what the revenue and expenditures are for the year ended. And then on page seventy-seven gets into the detail on the department by department level that shows you which, which individual areas went over or under budget. There weren't very much significant things that actually happened. Most of the line items were, were over budget for, for the revenues. Approximately eight hundred and ninety-two thousand, eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars over to the good in the total revenues on the bottom of the page in the, in the last column. So, the rep, there's much more revenues that came in, in the year that were unexpected or unanticipated. Moving on to page seventy-eight. Now, this is, this is the general government, public safety, public works, and the breakdown within each department of which you are so familiar with getting into the budget process. Now, have you guys wrapped up your budget yet?
No, we hope we'll do it tonight.
Tonight, okay, okay, well then let's get you up. So you can get that done. But individually, it, it talks about the variances on the department levels. And you can see that most of the departments are, in total, they're, they're, they're under budget. There's various lines within, within the departments that are over budget, but in total, the department level, they're, they're all under budget except for the total operating transfers. Operating transfers out, there were more transfers out than what was originally budgeted. On page seventy-nine, on the last line, or two lines up the bottom, one point three million dollars in total transfers. Of which the majority of that is to transfers to the capital and non-recurring fund. And a significant portion of that was for the fire, for the fire apparatus that was purchased. So with that said, there was, again, the, the deficit of nine hundred and forty-four thousand. And you're beginning fund balance, and you're ending fund balance of almost six million dollars. Like I said, of which there's six million dollars in cash, very strong financial position. So those, those are the highlights of your general fund budget. Where the second amount, largest amounts I want to go are to your capital non-recurring fund, which is on, on page eighty-six. Now, every year, every year, this schedule gets better and better as far as accuracy and the level of detail that comes to us from an audit standpoint. So the beginning balancer is what was approved for fixed asset purchases that were taxed for. And, and then current year appropriation should tie into your budget. If there are any debt proceeds or revenues, and there's only a small dollar amount, which is interest income. And then what was actually spent within the fund, nine hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. Then there's transferred within the various lines, depending on how the board wants to transfer money, page, page eighty-six. And then you have your net, your net fund balance. This was, to try to make this better in future years. We made a recommendation as to have a separate checking accounts to when the money is taxed in general fund. It's immediately transferred over into the capital and non-recurring fund. So there's not all this inter-fund activity that it gets convoluted in. It's very hard to unravel, it's gonna make Leslie's life a lot easier and simplify the actual accounting process. So hopefully, in twenty twenty-three, when you start doing that, it, it becomes something where she can say, thank you. You know, it was, it was a good idea. I'm, I'm a hundred percent confident that it's gonna make a big difference for you as far as identifying expenditures and reduce the amount of journal entries that you have to make. So there's no reconciliation process that you have to have. Those, those are the big items in your financial statements. The only thing that really happened from last year to this year was the small leases came on the books. If it's a lease, it's, it has to go on the books if it, if it is what we consider material. And it had as a lease obligation of excess of a year. So in the past, it was only capital leases. Now, it's, it's any lease, or governments pretty much go on the books now. So tracking them is, is critical. And, and getting through that process, the GASB conversion was wasn't as painful as I thought it was gonna be. So thank you, Leslie, for your assistance with that. Are there any questions on any of the numbers?
Can we address the special funds as well?
How would you like to address?
Any, any, I mean, the simplified, clear, precise understanding for both Brandy and I, so we know how we need to interact.
Okay, so what we have, what we have in some of the special funds, especially the educational grant monies. We have, we have monies that are going back and forth for special education excess cost. And in, in the past, I believe the town said that they were gonna give the Board of Ed some money, a, a piece of it. And so Board of Education uses some of it, but they give some of it back, whatever they don't use. Now, within their budget, the monies are already budgeted for. And, and ultimately, the town really doesn't have to give the Board of Ed any of the special ed costs, as long as it's budgeted, you know, and within their budget. So, what we wanna do is we wanted to, and I, and I believe Sholo so told you the same thing. The special ed revenue money, the revenue should be in the town, on the town side only. And the expenditures for the special ed costs are on the Board of Ed's side. That's how, that's how it works, you know, so you don't have this back and forth with the special ed money and excess cost money. Once you have that, you have money sitting in various accounts. And you're not supposed, Board of Ed's not supposed to have lump sums of money other than the non-lapsing account. They're supposed to go zero base. So the monies that come in and what's budgeted for is supposed to be spent. And anything over and above that, that's sitting in their bank accounts should be given back to the town. So the grant monies that were, were not spent, that were actual town revenues were budgeted for, and they were. The funny thing about the excess costs is that it's, it lags a year. And it's not, it's not, it doesn't have anything to do with this year, it's based off the last year's monies. So it's not gonna be the exact number that they spend. And, and there's a calculation, I think it's like four times the, the cost of one of the students and they reimburse for that. But, but ultimately, the Board of Education's not supposed to have any, any cash in, in their accounts, other than what they spent for the budgets and their grant money should be net zero also. So those, those are the educational grant and for their operating. They also have peripheral accounts that go on fees for daycare and, and rental of facilities. And any monies that they generate from those activities is their money, that is their money to spend on those activities. But, but the special ed excess cost money, there's money due back, was due back to the town at the end of the year. With that said, there are the funds, some police, was it extra duty? That is, it, it's a, it's a pain, you know, to reconcile every year and, and gross it up. Some of the monies, I, I don't, I don't know how you would get around it, other than putting the money directly into that fund and spend it on for its intended purpose. Right now, the journalizing of the activity is going through inter, inter-fund, which it was a lot better this year than in prior years as well. So all in all, you know, with, with those little baby steps improving, we're here three months. Is it three months? It's about three months earlier than in the prior year. And, and I even go out to say that, you know, if we get started earlier and, and the accounting is done and we're ready to go, we could probably have this done by the end of the year, if not earlier. You know, which would be moving back into the right direction. Where we're having trouble is the accounting package is difficult, to say the least, to work with. But you don't get a full general ledger and you have to run multiple reports and pieces together. So you have to go to different sources to get information. Of which the system allows for certain entries that I wouldn't say are, are gap type entries. It, it really shouldn't allow for those things. So what we have is, we have a system that's pieced together. And, and then you have a, a general ledger package that is, is difficult. It's difficult to work with right now. But if reconciliation process is done on a monthly basis, then a lot of these problems go away. And, and that gets us into our, the smaller report, this state federal and state single audit report. Starting on page fourteen are the, are the findings and question costs that we, we came up with during the year. So the audit reports in the beginning talk about compliance, there is no compliance issues. And the audit reports were federal, state, single audit are clean. This was a federal single audit this year, where in the past it was not. There was more work that had to be done related to the ARPA money. As you know, there's no free money. Whenever they give you money, there's always strings attached to it. And in this case, because the money was significant and it was spent in, in the fiscal year in excess of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the federal, a federal single audit was required. And so that's why there's multiple reports in, in here, instead of just what the town is used to seeing, the state single audit report. So with that said, on, on page fourteen, during our testing, what we found reconciliation between the town and Board of Ed. So what happened was, was that there's, there's cat, there's cash accounts, receivables, payables, inter-fund that are on the town side. The expenditure amount, Leslie tied out. The, that amount did tie out, which, which I was you know, happy with. But the, the cash balances didn't tie out and the payable amounts didn't tie out. So we had to make some proposed journal entries for that. But all in all, if, at, at the end of the year, what should happen is, is the transfer is over. Really should be the, the amount and, and the cash balance left and, and if anything, left in the Board of Education should be zero. You know, so if the, unless there's accounts payable. So if money didn't go out the door, then it would be sitting in your cash account. So your expenditure numbers would tie out, that's where you would, you would, might have a variance if they said, here's your accounts, here's the accounts payable. You, you transferred X number of dollars, that's not the same as what they owed and did not pay. So the cash that went out the door plus the accounts payables total number. So that's where this finding comes into play. But again, it is significant improvement in versus previous years. And being able to actually look down on, in the account and see that was the number that was on the Board of Education total expenditure number. So with that said, you know, if, if it's done on a monthly basis, great. If it's done at the year end in the, in the balance sheet accounts, Board of Ed, cap, cap payable, the expenditure numbers tie out, then, then this finding goes away next year. Any questions on that?
The only question I have there is, is that on all the accounts? So all the special funds as well as the general operating?
Those, well, not the special, not all the special funds, but you, you would have to, in some cases, you're, you're the finance director, so your reporting is on the total financial position of, of this, of the town, you know, so those, those reports you can rely on Brandy and, and you know, from my history of dealing with Brandy, I know that you're gonna get the right numbers at the end of the year. But to prepare the financial statements, what really should happen in an audit is that the only, the only thing that is ours is like three pages in this whole report of eighty something pages. What should happen in, in some of the, some of the cities, they hand you the financial statements and they say, audit them. And, and we, and we give our opinion on the financial statements. So all, all those, all their smaller funds would come to you and you would compile them and put them in. But, you know, we assessed in, in the preparation of, of the financial statements. So as long as, as long as the smaller funds are coming in to the package, I don't, I don't mind how they get there. But you also have inter-fund activity that you have to make sure tied out. And, and that's, you would catch those, those potential errors. If there's monies that are owed from one fund to another fund. Other, other than the Board of Ed, the, the only thing that you really owe them or, or they would owe you is that excess cost money at, at the end of the year, if all the transfers were made. And that's it. You know, so there's, there's maybe three or four other funds that are, are handled by, by the Board of Education, you know, there, there's student activity account and, and a couple of the other ones. But the educational grant is, is the most important one, as well as, you know, their operating account. Does that answer your question?
The answer is fine, Brandy, does that cover everything? Any, any questions that you would have?
Um, for the most part, yeah, I mean, I'll have to circle back with you just to figure out where we go from here, but yes, it did answer questions.
Moving on, budgeting. The detailed capital plan did not agree with the approved capital appropriations in the original budget. That's part of, part of the problem, you know, is, is that the amounts that the expenditures or the appropriations are made for, approved by the town during your special, special meetings. And those are the appropriations that were approved to be taxed and spent on. And, and if they don't, if the numbers that are given to us don't agree, we end up trying to tie, we tie them back to the minutes and you go through this approval process. If, if, if the numbers, the numbers for the capital non-recurring fund dovetail right into your general fund. This is, this is the total appropriations for, for the general fund, including the transfers to the capital non-recurring. And this is the amount that we're gonna tax. And, and if those numbers don't agree, and you have a detailed listing and you're saying, well, we have to get this for public works. We have to get this for, for, you know, police or whatever, then, then it's not on the list. Then, then you violated, you know, your, your budget process. And, and that's really critical that those numbers, those numbers agree. Now, moving forward, I believe, I believe Leslie verified numbers and made sure that they were supposed to agree with what's being taxed is the actual list of capital expenditures that are going to be provided for appropriations. So what's being taxed and collected ends up going into that separate bank account that we talked about. And those expenditures should agree with those expenditures that were approved, unless you have your special meeting and, and that list is modified like it was last year. Then, then those expenditures should tie out right directly to the budget. And now you have a strong, strong procedure in place to make sure that your, your budgets are, are what was agreed to and voted on. Any, any questions on, on that?
I have a question related to what we've been doing recently. So to make sure that we don't end up with a problem this year. What we did at the beginning of this year, last year in May, of course, is we appropriated a certain, obviously, capital projects. We also, some of them were to be funded by ARPA funds. So what has happened since then is that we've been very busy bees getting grant funding, funding. And we, let's see, with one of the transportation grants, that's gonna release money back to ARPA, right? Unrestricted, and so, and that was done at a, a town meeting last, last week, actually. And there are similar adjustments, because when we're getting other things that will then free up those ARPA funds so we can use them for additional eligible things, we're trying to do that. So are we gonna cause ourselves problems by doing this? Or is it as long as we, we do all the journal entries from the meetings, are we gonna be okay?
The minutes, the minutes should actually say where monies are coming from and going to.
They are.
And, and it, and you have your vote. In, in the past, when we were looking through the minutes, it was, it was it was a little bit more, it was a mystery. You know, we were trying, honestly, we were trying to figure it out. And we had to go to multiple sources and Paula was running around and get minutes and filling in pieces. There, there should be no, there's no confusion when it comes to the minutes. And, and if it's supported, it should be, well, it should be supported with actual reports. This is what, this is where the numbers are coming from. You know, not just a, a blank, you know, paper number, just some number. You should be able to go through and see the detail. So somebody like, that has no affiliation with the town could draw the same conclusion at you. That's, that's really the most important thing. So anybody could pick it up and say, yep, that's what they, that, here's your capital budget. And here's the total number, here, it ties right into what we taxed for. And here's our, here's our capital budget, here's what's in, in the capital non-recurring fund in totals. Now, if you're moving monies from, from a capital non-recurring, because you got it funded by a grant now. Then, then there's a transfer out of that fund to this fund. Of, of the, of the appropriation. And then you have to transfer, you would have to transfer money down to that unappropriated line item, and you would have more fund balance in capital non-recurring, that you would not have to tax for next year.
Right, okay.
You know, so you have, you basically have, you know, a surplus.
So we're doing it right this year.
Well, when I, when I look at, I'll let you know when I look at the numbers, but it sounds, it sounds like it, I have to, I have to see what the transfers are.
The thing is, they're all, nearly all capital projects. But sometimes when we release money back out to ARPA, it could be used for non-capital things also.
Right, there, there's flex, that's a flexible grant.
So, but these others are all, they're capital projects, we're approving them as capital projects, and we're approving the source of the money.
Okay, as long, as long as you can, if we go to that, that very same list in the, in the financial statements at the end on page eight-six, and we can see the, the flow from, if it was here initially, and then it's moved out, then it's gonna be transferred back down to future capital projects down here. And that's how it's supposed to work. And then if I'm the taxpayer in, in the town of Bethany, and you got money, that grant money, and you're gonna have to tax me for something that the town needs, that, that makes me happy as a taxpayer. So, so that works, so that, that would handle, handle that. If, if you have, if you can go to this one, this one report and it agrees, this one report has to tie to the actual, I believe it's Fund Fifteen, and, and we gotta close Fund Twenty down or, or whatever we have to do with those. But your capital non-recurring fund, that, that, you should, you have one point three million dollars in total fund balance, of which you have a, a signed fund balance or fund balance that you can use for future projects as of six thirty twenty-two of two hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. You know, so, so that, that changes as, as the budget process goes through, and then actual expenditures are happening. But having a tight budgeting process in place, so the numbers tie out, the board is very much involved in, in the day-to-day budgeting, as far as the budgeting process and making sure the numbers die out. I'm well aware, well aware of that. The, the budget in the system has to agree with the Excel that is voted on.
The, the.
About four of us is down on the left.
Alright, so in our budget for for next year is to switch to the MUNIS system. Um, at the town meeting last week, just as an FYI, uh, the meeting did approve the as part of. Changes um, in. Capital, oh, as ARPA funding actually because it was ARPA eligible. For the conversion costs, so we're also. Yeah, the license has to be before in the operating budget, but. We're hoping that if they were willing to let us fund the conversion, that they'll let us fund this option. And then we can sprint next year trying to, or this year, trying to figure out how to get into a new system.
The new system, anytime you're moving to a new system, it's it's new year, new system. It's not halfway through a new system, um. Picking up a new system on um, halfway through would be, um. It it's real, it's really difficult to do.
Don't wanna do that.
No, um, the MUNIS system is is one of the better ones out there. Um, and and it's gonna give you a full, a full general ledger from start to finish.
Desperately need that.
And and it's it's absolutely needed um, for uh, the review of of uh. The numbers uh, cuts down on journal entries and hopefully closing process. But I don't know if it has, uh, it has an encumbrance module if you buy it, uh, if you wanted to use it. That's one of the areas where we ran into some issues last year too. Um, the accounts payable was uh, in a uh, on just a running number. Instead of giving us a list of here's who we owe and that number agrees with what's in your general ledger, we didn't have that. Um, during the year, we had to, you had to uh, verify and test and and then there was corrections along the way. Um, so it that was, that was tough. Um, but um, moving, moving, I will move on to um. Twenty two. Um, zero zero four, uh, recording of uh, transfers. Um, this, this has to do with the um, the fire apparatus, the entry that was made. Um, in the system and again, if if you. Go to immune, the MUNIS system, this is kind of, a lot of these kind of take care of that. If, but you also have to put the right information into the system or or you're not gonna get what you need out of it. You know, it's it's garbage in, garbage out, you know, so you still have to do the the little things. Uh, reconciling on a monthly basis and so on, um, just having the software is not gonna solve. Um, everything, it's gonna solve some of the systemic problems related to uh, being able to post an entry. Um, to reduce a a line item so you can uh, put more expenditures against it. Now, that's, that's really what what happened instead of, and and I believe that that wasn't your fault. Um, that was the way that the software company told you to do that. Um, so uh, in order to free up more money within that line item. You had to reduce the expenditure by the transfer, instead of having, here's your, here's your budgeted numbers. And just change the budgeted numbers and your actual numbers are what actually happened. That's why they're actual numbers, it's it's not complex. You know, but if you're posting against um, actual numbers, a budgeted amount, then. Then numbers don't make sense and your trial balance doesn't balance and and your fund balance is off and and it was um. The the system just allowed for things that should not, should not happen. Um, but but that that was the recording of um, transfer, plus there was other transfers that took place. Uh, resulting in us having to post um, adjustments uh, in the amount one point six million dollars to correct. Um, those, those transfers um, that were systemic. Um, and and that's, and that's it, I mean, for um, for the findings. Now, all these findings can go away if if the accounts are reconciled on a monthly basis. Period. That's it, your budget goes in. It's reconciled and agreed to what what was approved, transfers on a monthly, monthly basis. This is where we said we wanted the money going from to, everybody voted, yes, that's that and and that's where it's going, here's these, here's the entry. Posted from. The adjustment column, from one adjustment column to another adjustment column within the budgeted numbers only, not the actions. And and that takes care of e- everything here. You know, um, so it's not, it's not as um. Complex, but you but you have to have the discipline to do the little things on a month to month basis or else it becomes way too. Uh, much for one person, one person to do. Um, and and the department that, you know, you, we started out, we had a not a finance director here. There was a treasurer that was part time. You know, and the town is growing and and you have more transactions. And the town has to have people in place so it can operate as if. Um, you know, it's business as usual and I have to go to outside sources. And and I think you you're moving in that direction where you where you need to be, you know, a finance director, you have people in in um. Clerks that are assisting uh, the finance director, so the finance director should be more along the lines of an overview review. Person as opposed to do journal entry on a on a regular basis, so they post all the activity. Um, and then it's reviewed and that's how you get that separation, you get a stronger, um, a stronger internal control, less errors. Um, we did, we did have um. Twenty something adjustments uh, for the general fund. Um, I think there was twelve uh, for special revenue and sticks for um, capital projects. Mostly were inter fund accounts of which we tried to persuade. You guys to go to the cash system for the capital non recurring fund. Um, and have to come up with a, I think, a better way with the uh, police. Um, police fund, um, but if you reconcile on a monthly basis. Those those adjustments go away, next year, the goal, the goal is to get, let's get under ten. You know, and then let's get to five and then the numbers that the board's getting on a month to month basis are these numbers. You know, so you're you're making decisions on numbers and we and we have adjustments that go from. Uh, a five hundred thousand dollar surplus to uh, nine hundred thousand dollar uh, deficit. And and you're aware of it. I I don't know how you guys do it, cuz I can't, I can't, like, I have to see it. But um, you knew five hundred thousand was for. Uh, fire, fire truck, maybe six hundred thousand, and then there was other, other items um, along the way too. But all the accounts have to be reconciled, starting with the first balance sheet account, all the way down in order for you. To be able to know that you have assurance that your numbers are correct and not just get a P and L. On a monthly basis that says bunch to actual, here's our numbers and you have big, big swings in numbers and. And um, and and you don't, you don't know why. You know, and then we have, you know, twenty twenty adjustments, you know, so with with, hopefully with the MUNIS system. You know, that you're moving to, um, we still have another year under the old system. Um, but if you're reconciling on a monthly basis, then uh, I I know you're, I know you're probably up to date, I know. And I'm probably, I bet you, you know, knowing you, I I hope. Um, but uh, if that's the case, then your guys are getting good numbers on a monthly basis. You know, and then you can look at your bottom line and then you could say, oh, we need, we need to get X number about, we need more money, we're gonna, we're gonna have a. Have some problems three months down in the future, you know, and you could be more proactive instead of uh, instead of reactive. You know, that's my, that's my audit uh, presentation for twenty fifth.
Oh, it was an improvement, twenty one had eighty seven adjusting entries.
Oh, significant, you know, a quarter, well, that, yeah. I don't know how he did that many adjustments, but um, that's, that's, that's almost um. It's almost easier to start from zero in at some point in time, but that's a lot of adjustments. So twenty is a significant improvement.
Less for twenty twenty two. Even, well, even after last year, so I know these are the same findings, some of them, but um. What what we did find was that none of the town meeting uh, appropriations capital had. None of those journal entries had been put in for the appropriations and three months worth of transactions. Had not been entered and what, none of the payables had been.
In between, in between finance directors?
Yeah.
Yes.
And there, there was not a bank account reconciled when I got here, March first of last year.
Yeah.
So I think we're three quarters of the way through the year.
It's not, it's not horrible. It's it's a significant improvement from last year.
So. Okay, thank you.
I'll look forward to your email and and if there's any questions. If there are any questions now, I'll address them or, um, if you have any questions, uh, feel free to reach out to me, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you for having me.
Brandy and Kay, if you would like to exit the meeting, we completely understand, you're welcome to stay for the whole thing, so we have covered what you were interested in hearing.
We won't be insulted if you leave.
Thank you, Leslie, I appreciate you and thank you for the information, guys, appreciate it.
Okay, um. So the next thing on our agenda is the minute. Is the minutes of the three previous meetings. Well, I I was actually thinking that we should just uh, table them because we really. Need to move on, the uh, ARPA projects, funds, adjustment, these are, these are small. Uh, related to under and over expenditures on approved projects, uh, we can table that also. We could do one at a time, if you wanna table for minutes, that's. Alright, can I have a motion to table the minutes until the next meeting? Yeah, discussion, those in favor? Kathy, you're on mute. But that's alright, so, um, and then the ARPA. Yeah, okay, so the ARPA fund adjustments, these were those small amounts in on the report that we had at the town meeting last year. Um, I'd like, I'd like a motion to table discussion on that. And action, because we, alright.
Yes, I can.
Discussion on paper.
Alright, alright.
Alright, alright. Then, um, I'd like to move the discussion on grants to. Uh, at least after the budgets. Folks, later in the meeting, time permitting. Motion, thank you. On paper.
Alright.
Hi.
Alright.
Very quickly, my third of the report, I have. What is it? Oh, the first one is you got an enclosure that said, um, the. What's the name of that agency, government? No, it isn't GOSB.
Oh, GFOA.
GFOA, Government Financial, um. Accounting Association or Association of Accounts, okay, so this um, this organization. That that article is about, that was in your, in your package, this is important before we do anything else. Recommends that the minimum general fund balance should be two months' worth of expenditures. So that's one six, which is seventeen point seven percent minimum. Standard, okay, because we had. Something that said eleven to fourteen and then we kind of went from twelve. To or to eighteen, anyway, just so that you know that they're saying essentially you should be able to cover. Two months' worth of your expenditures with your general fund or cash flow, so that's a whole. And that's an updated standard, um, as of, I think, twenty seventeen, so. That's an FYI. Okay, the only other thing to tell you is the AMIDY Board of Education approved. The uh, recommendation of the AMIDY Finance Committee to bring the budgeting at two point two five percent. Now, there is a. You have a little worksheet there, if of course I don't have it in front of me. But this is showing you the adjustments to what we need to appropriate this year. Okay, so last year in May. Um, at our town meeting, we appropriated the eight million nine eighty eight, that's before the referendum. But we actually appropriated that because we didn't know, we always do. Like, we, we have to, but eventually what was, that's our portion. By the time the referendum went down twice and got approved on the third round. Our allocation was eight million nine eighteen to seventy nine. Which meant that that next seventy thousand oh sixty had been appropriated, but was not going to be spent, given to AMIDY. So people had been taxed for that. Then, uh, rather than write us a check for. The surpluses from prior years, what they did was reduce. Our payment for the month of March. So its impact is similar, but not the same. Uh, so that's a hundred and twenty six, nine oh eight fifty six, that again, we have collected from our taxpayers. But haven't paid to AMIDY. Okay, then, so at this time, we have an excess appropriation. Of hundred ninety six, nine sixty eight. So our assessment for the current budget that was passed, that will be in. In our budget is nine point three one seven, three five one. Uh, the amount that we're going to have to appropriate is actually nine million, a hundred and twenty three eighty two and forty four cents. Just so you know, so what you're going to see is on Leslie's schedule. Uh, that where the Board of Finance number is for AMIDY is this lower number. Because that's how much we have to tax people for this year. And they're already running a one point three million dollar surplus, so our share of that will come back next year. And we will pay less of this and we'll again.
So it might be pretty close to last year.
Yeah, well, no, it's gonna be nine million. Yes. Okay, just so you would know, because you're going to see different numbers and because this is confusing and. It's going to have to be explained over and over again, okay, I'm done. Where's the agenda? Do you want to hold off on the moment? Can we move it, can we move it to the end, so because we've got the. Okay, yeah, so could I have a a motion to move the first selectman's report to. At least after. After items eight. Okay, so.
Okay. First up, um, in the packet, there were year-to-date financials. But didn't you update them since? Nope, the ones that they got were completely update with the expenses and the revenues. They were accurate, they were up to date, and. And it also. Yeah, item eight A. They were, was the ARPA funds. The revenues, this is just year-to-date. Numbers on the attachments. Now, what I have done. And then after all the expenses and the revenues. There was also. The cash position as of February twenty eighth. With. Reconciled bank statements. So that is the actual cash on hand as of February twenty eighth. Any. Any questions on any of those?
This is this.
Because it was all, it was also noted along the, the last column had. Notes as to why some of the accounts were over budget or revenues were. That's next.
Well. Do you want to first?
Yes. All right. So. So.
Nothing, nothing on the board.
All right. So I'll give Lars a second just to take a peek if he has any questions on those.
Eight A, you said, right?
I don't see anything just in the paper, so.
That's the meeting record show that John Ford has just joined us. I'll give him one of these too. There it is. All right. Nigel, just start with this. Let's start. Let's start with the small, the small packet that was handed out a little bit ago that has the Amity numbers on on the first page, on the first page. If you flip it over to page two, it will tell you where we are right now with the budget as it stands right now with the sort of, sort of. This is.
This was this morning.
This was this morning. With the current expenditures as submitted, it's twenty-seven point four million dollars. We know what our non-tax revenue is based off of what was submitted to date, which is three point seven million. So the next number is how much do we need to get from taxes? And when we go through the entire calculation on how you build your mill rate, in order to meet that number, the mill rate needs to go to forty. To maintain the current tax rate, we would have to subsidize the budget by two point one million dollars.
We don't have that much. We only have six million.
The large printout that I gave you tonight, I had gone back through some. Yeah, I did give one over there. There's one over there for Janice and that. It's it's right in front of the. I make some. This tells you where we are now is our percentage to twenty-two actuals. I'm just looking at the last four columns on this report. Kathy, do you have yours from Fran?
Yes.
Perfect.
Thank you.
The last four columns are going by four. It's our, it's the twenty-four budget as a percentage change from the twenty-two actuals. The next column is the percentage change from the twenty-three budget. The next column right now is a proposal. It adjusts some of the revenue and some of the expense numbers to come up with a new percentage increase from the twenty-three budget because the budget as presented on page seven tells you that it is a seven point four one percent increase from twenty-three to twenty, from, yeah, from twenty-three to twenty-four. The proposed changes that I have put in bring it down to three point eight percent. Now, where did I get those numbers? On the capital budget, we had seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for roadwork. I have chosen to schedule that out over two years. Three hundred and fifty thousand in twenty-four, four hundred for twenty-five. The truck at two hundred and ninety thousand dollars. I chose to put in with the installment payments, which would be a hundred and twelve thousand two hundred and eighty-four dollars for four years, which reduces for three years, excuse me. Thanks, Sharon, for catching that. Which reduces the capital ask budget by five hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. Under Public Works budget, the major road work was put in at four hundred thousand dollars. I took two hundred and fifty thousand out of it and left it at one hundred and fifty. Keeping in mind that there is three hundred and fifty thousand in the capital budget for roadwork. And we had discussed last time that we felt that all major road work belonged in capital and not in operating. The Amity ask was modified to reflect the reduction of one hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars. And on the revenue side, as we have been discussing, we were, we took the ask by Park and Rec for counselor salaries, summer camp expenses and program expenses. I added those three numbers together to come up with a revenue number of three hundred and fifty-two thousand, eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars. And that is the number that was plugged in on the revenue side. Are these absolutes? No, they're talking points and their starting basis tonight for us to figure out how we're going to get a budget put together that we can all live with. So so then if you turn to the third page on the small print handout, the new appropriation for next year is twenty-six point three million. When you add in the non-tax revenue, the ask from the for tax dollars is twenty-two point four million, which puts us at an estimated mill rate of thirty-seven point eight. If we want to keep the mill rate where it is at thirty-six, we need almost a million dollars in subsidies from the general fund. Comments, questions, discussion? That was just how we calculated the general fund numbers.
I got a question on the on the roadworks. So the three fifty capital, that's fine. We'll do as many roads as we can. The one fifty, we just gotta hope there's no issues with roads. No cave-ins, no collapses, no whatevers. And when you just said that that you wanted to take all the roadwork out and put it in capital, we still need money in there for normal.
Well.
Normal roadwork.
You still.
We do have a hundred and fifty thousand in there, which is fine. So as long as there's no, like what falls road comes, we spent a hundred and fifty thousand just fixing fall road.
Correct.
Um, I mean, something happens, there's money, you know, we'll have to ask for more money somewhere else, but what is what it is.
So we're all general, like, chip, uh, if we have the seal and chips.
Okay, we did. We did break that out. There's a line item in there for a hundred thousand for chip seal, crack seal and line painting.
That's gonna be under regular, the regular budget.
Well, that used to be, that used to be taken out of contract services.
But it's in, it is in the budget.
It is in the budget, yes.
As a line item, it will be.
Road was surfacing?
No, it's gonna be after that. It is on page six. It's it's labeled road maintenance. That would be the crack seal and the chip seal. That's a hundred thousand dollars. That money is there.
Yes.
And the hundred and fifty-four thousand for road material is there. So that would still, even taking the road repair down, still leaves you three hundred thousand dollars.
For real, that's, that's fine. That's fine. I mean, again, back to Jack, what, there used to be a hundred and fifty thousand in contracting services. And that was a catch-all. That was anytime a contractor did anything. Well, we broke it out, contracted services, not any service that we have contracted for, pest control, alarm monitoring, well testing, things like that. And we broke out anything that was not a contracted service. And we put that, like you said, most of it went into the road repair line, road maintenance. Everything else in the public works pretty much stayed the same.
Yeah, actually very little change. So we're looking at having to obviously increase the mill rates with this budget to thirty-seven point eight or find a compromised level of subsidy that won't that can minimize or at least help a little bit with the mill rate, but not also hamper us next year. Because what's happening is that we're getting very close to as given the rate of the increase in the expenditures, we're drawing down the general fund quickly, like, because the the impact on the ratio doesn't hit for.
You gotta start by putting that amount in again next year.
Yes, and yes, if we take a half million out of here by by next year, it's a million. Right. So if we take a quarter million out here, by next year, it's a half million because we have to make up that quarter million before we even start. But that's also given that that the standard is now essentially eighteen percent.
When Amity came out with the student enrollment, what did we look like for the following year? After this budget?
Trying to remember, I believe that we're going up.
Going up again.
Yeah, we're going up again. We're, well, this also could be another sixth grade class. Is it sixth grade?
All right, no, because a pass board member told me that they they said it was gonna go significantly down. They just told me this this weekend.
Do you have elementary schools going up in the last few school years? They've gone up sixty kids.
Well, they can go up sixty, but if it's at the younger age, it won't affect us for.
The problem is orange is going down very quickly and much more than than we are. So our proportion is going up, even though.
So I'm just trying to think that's could be another hit again next year, the following year.
Yes. The the initial impact force for this year was almost, almost five hundred thousand more, but.
Oh, they, we knew it was coming. We talked.
Yeah, the Amity is going into salary negotiations next year and I think it's another year before. Thought it was last year. So.
So if we're at the thirty-seven, what is that? Thirty-seven point eight. How much comes out of the general fund to make that happen?
Not.
Should have moved one up a point or whatever, a little over a point.
That's almost two.
Two points.
Almost two.
But with Andy going up, Bethany going up, inflation at eight percent, that's not you can't control a lot of this.
But you know what? More of it is in the town than in in the schools.
Yes.
Neither one of them had budget increases, yes, the way the town did. So although they're over seventy percent of our budget. Yes. That which why is that rattling like?
The town budget does increase significantly, right? But what I, the one line item sticks out for me is if you look at the Board of Ed fuel, they're near the end. Just their fuel oil is up forty-three percent from this year to next year. Because but based off of the number of gallons of oil they need to use, that is right at the new rate. The the price, the price is up a dollar, almost a dollar a gallon for oil.
When we took over paying for their fuel oil, wasn't it like a hundred and twenty thousand or a hundred and fifty thousand?
It was low.
It, but. What am I looking at?
The two, the last two numbers is a hundred and forty-six thousand dollars.
All right, yeah.
For the fuel oil and the gasoline for the buses.
Well, I think the price of it stuck went down and then went back up.
Probably.
Okay, so just so that we don't keep it your own, Nick and Gems, do you want to address?
Do you have a counterproposal to your expense budget?
Well, first I will say, I just doing some quick calculations based on your revenue figure, which is the first time I'm hearing it tonight. The allocation would then be, you can call it a subsidy allocation allotment, whatever we want to call it. It looks like it's one twenty-six, five twenty-eight, right? And that actually, if I left everything alone right now, that's actually down from a hundred and eighty-eight from this current year, and it was over two hundred thousand the last year. So I I guess right now, I just want to make that point, that we're actually actually, given what you're asking me to make right now in revenue, I'm asking then for a lot significantly less this year versus last year without changing a thing. Okay? Having said that, because, I mean, I I think we can recognize this, this this budget season for us has been like actually no other we've had before. And and it was a little bit surprising, but it's it's what we have. So what we decided to do, or I decided to do, to be honest, is kind of give you an explanation of some of what goes into it. Okay? And then you guys, you all can decide what you would like to do. The first page is really just a synopsis of some of the numbers based on what you'll see on subsequent pages. So if you, because you did ask for summer camp and rec room, basically. We do have other programs, but for the purposes of some, a lot of what we're talking to about right now would be summer camp and rec room because that's the majority, that's where the majority of the revenue comes from, and that's where the majority of the expenses are. Well, for salaries. Other programs cost a little bit of money, but um, but those two sources probably are the biggest contributors to revenue and salary expenses, other than Anthony's and mine. So if you looked at the second page, we broke it instead of doing it by counselor, which would have taken a long time to do, we did it by hourly wage. Okay, so you see where we are in the current year. I I did make changes, by the way, based on previous years for from the Board of Finance. You all asked me to increase the hourly wages for all counselors based on the increase of the minimum wage. Based on the increase of the, uh, minimum wage, okay? Approximately seven percent, it's been between like seven percent and about nine percent. For a about four, five years coming now, because they brought it from about ten dollars to fifteen dollars this year, is where it is at. In talking to Leslie, that's not what you want to do. And only I didn't know that, because nobody had mentioned that prior to my submitting this the first time. So I went back and recalculated so that the, um, older counselors, the more skilled counselors or seasoned counselors. Are getting somewhere between a two and a half and three percent. If it's two and a half, we rounded it up like to the next ten cents or something. So, um, there was a reduction right there, because, um. Because we had just run with what you all had had us do in the past, which would have brought us to everybody at about seven percent. Everybody but me and Anthony. So that reduced, um. That reduced salaries for both summer camp and rec room. So that the total, if I just took those two programs, is about two hundred thousand dollars, and I did add in Bethany Hoops. Which is about, which I would anticipate to be about fifty-seven hundred dollars for next year. Because, um, this year we ran it as lean as we could. Uh, but you do have to supervise a bunch of kids, and fortunately for us, the, um. Enrollment did go up, the registration did go up for Beth and Hoops. I I will tell you that Beth and Hoops is a good example of a program that is not making money right now. Um, the with the lower enrollment at the school, it certainly affected our registration for Beth and Hoops. When you add COVID on top of that, it it was a, it was a definite hit to Beth and Hoops. Because it's a more physical environment that, you know, where people, kids are, you, there's no social distancing playing basketball, so. Parents or families opted not to have them play. So, um, even though it is, it that is running out a little bit of a loss, we would like to keep going with it, because it had always been very successful. Um, and we're hoping to build it back to what it had been in the past. And this year, we probably got, uh, you know, we we got at least, you know, uh, more than twenty kids. Um, back into the program, so at least we had a lot of viable, we had viable teams for fourth through sixth grade to play. Having said that, you know, because we've heard a little bit about a a lot of things, okay? This this, um, budget cycle. So if we looked at the revenue, but, um. I know that people have said build from the ground up, which is something we had done a long time ago to come up with the original rates. And if I were to have to go back to every single part, and I had talked to Leslie and Sharon about this earlier. I would still be calculating this now, because this has been a very labor-intensive, um, process for us this year. Which is actually taking me away from money-making opportunities for other programs. Those have all been, anything new has been put on hold. Because I've been doing this, or a lot of this. So if I looked at it, just so that you get an idea of what we had made this year, um. The total revenue for summer camp was two hundred and three thousand five eighty-nine. Now, there are a couple of entries that might have to be changed, because I haven't gotten a answer from Leslie yet as to whether. It it used to be any refunds, and there were a couple, only because when the grant came through, a couple of the kids who qualified for the grant. Parents had already paid, so we were gonna give them a refund. We always used to do it as a refund of revenue. And there was a debate as to whether it's that or an expense. So I need to have an answer on that before I get an absolute figure. Also, the payroll, you see where the payroll is. Um, the payroll's a little bit, it it's hard to explain, because some of the. A- all of our expenses, as in supplies or outside contractors for summer camp, come from the line item, summer camp expenses. But the payroll, even the, it's summer camp starts, um, when the school year ends. So this year, I expected to start on June nineteenth, unless we have a lot more snow. Um, that means we'll have a pay, pretty much a pay period, um, in the month of June. So it, even though it's for summer camp twenty twenty-three, it's happening, it's being paid out. In fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, do you, does that make sense? So I put it in there for for a an estimate, and we think we're fairly, we feel fairly, um, confident in the estimate. So when you take the payroll out of, payroll and, um, the expenses of twenty-eight thousand out of the two oh three. We've got a ninety, uh, thousand two seventy-one surplus. So we're feeling pretty confident that those are reasonable numbers, and because we increased. Um, the rates, three percent, and then, you know, and and then rounded up. We expect to be at about two hundred and nine thousand next year. Um, people had asked whether, how much lost revenue we have because of multiple kids from a family and and taking advantage of discounts. There's really one family that have four kids, there's three families with three kids, and, um. And so we're not looking at thousands of dollars of lost revenue. So I would hope that we would continue to be, well, we actually have continued to, um. Make accommodations for them, because we've already sent out the flyer, and we've already gotten registrations. So I would be hopeful that in the future, you all would not wanna do it, would not that want to decrease that. Or eliminate that discount, because there aren't that many families who take advantage of it, and. You know, as 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 competitive as our rates are, it's still a lot of money for families to try, I don't, to try to come up with. Rec room is is, um, you know, pretty much the same, relatively self-explanatory, um. We are able not to use as many, uh, supplies. We use, uh, for rec room, we're able to use a lot of the supplies that are already in existence, so we don't have to purchase a lot of items for it. So, um, again, we came in at a hundred and two, where we expect to, based on the revenue that's coming in per month. So we expect to have a net profit of thirteen thousand eight sixty-five for that. And again, the, some of them are the exact same families that pay so much, um. For, um, you know, they they have, they're, they have, we have the same four, uh, families. With four kids and three kids, who are pretty much doing both, and, um. We are comfortable with the discount that they get. We also give a ten percent discount to rec room parents who sign up for summer camp by a certain amount, by a certain date. And conversely, we give, if we get, um, rec room, um, commitments. Um, for the fall, by a certain time, and there was summer camp, we give them a ten percent, um, discount. If you look to the next page, um, grants, since everybody was talking about them before, I had one too. Um, we already did get the, um, the registration information. I've already signed up for the Zoom meeting, which talks about the registration information. It appears to me that there, the allocations, the the amount of the grant have increased, but I. I have to confirm that. When I took a quick look, it, I I thought I saw anywhere from twenty-five to fifty thousand. Don't know if there are any, um, conditions for that. Last year, they had a condition where you had to be able to match the amount that they gave you. Then they rescinded that, so then we didn't have to match it, um, but I, I am waiting to. Um, attend the Zoom meeting tomorrow to really know what that's about. But I will say, with respect to grants, because it's it's confusing to me, I'm not, um, an auditor, I'm not. And so for me, I need to, there has to be some way that I can see that either that revenue's coming to my department. Or the ex- the associated expenses leave my department, because. I I try to reconcile that way, and so it may not be the way Leslie has to. Put it, put it in like a general ledger entry or whatever it is, but in order for me to keep track of that. I need to have some report saying that it's there, you know, I know we confirmed it's there. But I, you know, I listened to John, and he was saying how important it is to have monthly, monthly reports, so I would, I would like them too. I it's just really important for me, because last year, when I had to do, um, when I had to balance, um, with Kelly. Uh, twelve months worth of credit card payments, because apparently they hadn't been done prior to that in the finance department. She wasn't here, and that's what I did. That was a huge project for me to do, smack dab in the middle of summer camp, so. I hope to avoid things like that by getting regular reports, so then I can actually see what everybody has. And where it's going, so there's no confusion as to which fiscal years or or anything like that. Because that did wind up, it's understandable, we all, you know, i- it's confusing between summer camp and where it goes. But when it doesn't go in the right place, it does make it kinda difficult.
Um, the next one, could I ask a question about that? What is the name of the?
It's a, it's the Connecticut Summer Enrichment Program.
Right, and where is that?
Okay, um, the grant revenue would be in other state.
Other state.
Other state grant revenue.
All right, and how much was the grant?
I don't have the exact number, but it's between twenty-five thousand and twenty-six thousand.
Okay, first one for twenty-six, seven.
No, it's something completely different.
That's different.
That is different. But, but that's what was, is.
Okay. Other state and local grants.
We budgeted twenty-six thousand, because that's the number that we receive from the state.
Okay.
That's an entitlement that we get from the state. That money, but our actual money this year is two hundred and nine. So the twenty-six thousand, twenty-five, twenty-six thousand that Janice is referring to. Is in that two hundred and nine thousand.
Okay. And part of that, that problem was because of. Um, not because of that grant, but because of other grants, where while the office was vacant. Just when the state told us what grants we were gonna get from them, and so they didn't get into the budget. I mean, that's how we ended up with.
These two, these two payments did come, one came in in August of this, uh, twenty twenty-two, and one came in, uh, September. So I don't know if any.
Both in this fiscal year.
Yeah, so there shouldn't be any issue with this particular.
No, except that they weren't in the budgeted revenue. So.
They were not budgeted.
So should we be budgeting for those now? Because that would reduce what we're going to ask you to cut.
Okay, um, ha- ha- okay, so hang on a second. Some, so you're saying in. Because I would never know to tell, I mean, they knew I was getting a bu- um, a grant, because it was. Because we told the Board of Finance, because it was approved prior to, or maybe just as. No, I take it back, it was probably approved, it was approved late the first year, so that could be sort of part of the confusion, I don't know. We, I'm hoping that we get it. I would actually need, I don't feel comfortable telling you how much I think we could get, because I don't know what the parameters are, and I won't know that until tomorrow. So I can tell you tomorrow what it might be. Um, I just looked very quickly at the, um. You know, a- at the email that came through, and I thought I saw twenty-five to fifty thousand. So I'm going to surmise that we wouldn't get close to fifty thousand.
I'd get twenty-five.
But I I'll be happy if we get twenty-five to thirty thousand, but I don't know if they're gonna like prioritize. This program, um, you know, in our town for for it. I don't have any way of knowing it.
Okay, hold on one second.
Can I ask a question?
That's what I was just going for, I saw your hand was up. Hi, Katie.
Hi, thank you. I didn't want to interrupt, you guys are on a roll for quite a while, um, and I'm sorry that I am joining late. Um, by any chance, Janice, do you have digital copies of what you are showing to the, uh, folks in the room?
Um, is there, I think there, are those additional copies or?
No, she's just asking for a digital copy.
Oh, digital copy? I could, I could email them to you tomorrow if you want.
Thank you, that would be helpful. Um, I think just in terms of budgeting, I think the grant needs to go in as. You know, budgeted revenue, and we'll put in, you know, twenty-five thousand as a conservative estimate, and we can wait for Janice to provide. More feedback in the next day or two, as she has the Zoom meeting, but we should record it as. As revenue for certain, um, to the Parks and Rec program. That seems to make sense to me.
Well, we have to put it under other state and local grants, Katie.
Okay, but.
But yes, it's.
But you understand what I'm saying, although maybe it's in a different.
We would reduce what we would like them to collect and increase.
It offsets, yeah, definitely.
And it it has to, because we actually incur expenses, so we have to have it, it, we have to have it offset. We, otherwise, we wouldn't take advantage of the grant, it would not help our department at all.
Yeah.
Okay, so now, we're hopping on, if you go to the next page, it should say outside contractors. This is, it, this is actually turning out to be a, um, kind of a sticky. Um, wicked sort of a thing, because we have, in the past. We have been told that any outside contractors, which is the way we often wanna go, instead of putting them on the payroll. Um, it comes out of, their fees come out of, um, the expense line. And whether it be a program line item, a summer camp if somebody comes in, et cetera. The difficult part of that is, is that it really, leaving it this way, and only really adjusting for, um. Adjusting for inflation for actual supplies. It's very difficult to come up with new programming, because we did it this year, and I'm gonna be like, trying to eke out. The, now till the end of the year for for programs like sculpting and watercolor and. Um, and those sorts of programs, and yoga, because they're outside contracted, right? And so if I come across, I just happen to come across the, this art instructor, and she's wonderful, kids love her, and they've really enjoyed the classes. But I'm literally getting to the point now where. I I can, I don't know if I'm gonna be able to run her from now until the end of the year. Because I'm running out of money there. Now, I will say that the, the, they are paid based on. The fee for the kids, so it's not, they're not getting an hourly wage, they're getting, if they have fifteen kids, and we pay. And they charge fifty do- like fifty dollars to come in, we charge only fifty-one or fifty-two. Because I wanna make sure they're paid. Um, I don't wanna make it too expensive for kids not to be able to sign up. So the money is there, they're not getting paid anymore, they're getting paid slightly less than what we're bringing in. But because the revenue side never catches up to the, it's not part of the expense side. I don't know how it matches up, but we, it, by it not matching up, we're making it an in-and-out sort of a situation, if we can do that. It's actually not, and I can't move things between, uh, expense line items anymore. So I used to do that, but we're, I'm not allowed to do that anymore. I'm just telling you, this, the way it's set up now makes it unbelievably difficult to actually try to do creative programming and keep it going. The money's there, we've paid for them, we're paying the expenses of it, but because the money, what in particular. The money goes to the general fund, and then the expenses go towards my, my budget. And so never the two shall meet.
The revenue gets plugged in to the park and rec revenue line. Katie, what is your question?
You're muted.
Thank you. My question is, um, with regards to, um. Well, two points. I I actually understand her pain right now. She's able to, like, if she can scale. I understand what she's saying, she's not able to, like, okay, you know, I have the ability to bring in extra money with this, so let me spend a little bit more, but unfortunately. Again, that's not how budgets work, but I I. I fully believe that we agreed amongst this board, that people can move money within their own budgets. And they don't need to come to approval, it's just when they start, when they plan to exceed their total budget amount. That's when they have to come and ask for contingency money. So that was my understanding, and I I don't. I I don't understand why Janice is being told something different. And I think I would want to, and I might have to say, like, we might need to to really discuss this amongst the board, how. This is a fundamental disagreement, because I I thought we were really clear about this. Um, and then, you know, get back to Janice about it, but it makes sense to me, where she's given a certain amount of money total, that she allocated her best guess at budget season. And then certain things go high, certain things go low, she's allowed to overspend in areas if she. Um, overspends in some and underspends in others. That is my understanding, that department heads have that flexibility. For example, she knows that she's not gonna be spending as much on summer camp, because. She expen- she just found some awesome savings idea, so she can spend a little bit more on programs. Uh, such as this sculpting class, because, um, it's within her authorized budget. So that was my understanding of how department heads had that flexibility. The understanding I also thought we had was that if they did overspend in one area and under in another, they don't go back and transfer to cover. Because it, we want to leave a documentation trail of what they were budgeted and what they actually spent as a tool to help us for the following year for budgeting. So, um, I I would like to have someone explain to me from our board, how. If I'm misunderstanding that, and I think we need to talk about it.
I don't think you are.
I don't think you are, Katie. Um, I think, uh, no, I, I think that what you're, you're saying is exactly what, what we want to see happening. But I do have a question about the sculpting one. Um, are you saying the outside contractors provide, um, that we pay them the fee and they provide the supplies?
Yes, no, the supplies are included.
All right, then those, those should be net zero.
Exactly.
But she has a limit, but she has only a certain amount in her budget. Right now, she, when she made her budget, you know, last summer, she said, uh, maybe I can do programs, a couple art classes, and then she found that these art classes are really popular, but in her expense line, she only budgeted for three art classes, when in fact, she can bring in the revenue to run, you know, five of them, but her expenses would be exceeded, even though the revenue would match. Am I explaining it, Janice?
You, yes, yes, you are, that is exactly right.
No, the revenue should go up to.
Yes, but she doesn't have the authority to, to blow her budget.
She does not have the authority to exceed the departmental budget.
Okay, so.
Uh, okay, so, because that wasn't explained that way, the last, after the budget was set last year. I was not allowed to, because if it goes back to the way it used to be, that actually offers a lot more flexibility, and I can do what I had been doing.
What we're asking though is that you do not code it to charge it to another account that has funds in. If you need it.
That's fine, I can do that, because I can't code her for summer camp when she's coming in, in March, you know, so I'm happy to do that.
My fee said it, it will show a history of what line.
Absolutely.
Over with this.
That's.
Senses of what's under.
But that's.
Future budgeting. You would have the dollar amount in your revenue, and you would have it in your expenses.
Correct.
So there's, there's.
There shouldn't be a problem, but, I mean, when, yes, that's perfect then, if that's.
And so, just to follow up with that, Janice, so in theory, if you've now exhausted your, your budget line and, um, you, you kind of, you look like you're gonna exceed your total budget now, but if you came to us and said, hey, guys, I might need, um, some draw, Board of Finance, I'm in a jam right now, I'm, I'm looking like I might exceed my total budget, but I've also brought in this much revenue over my revenue amount, you know, then we'd have more flexibility to, to give you some contingency money possibly. The only thing is, um, I, I heard her mention she's not getting regular reporting of her, um, of her income numbers, I mean, how often do you, do you get the information that you need to sort of track that?
Um, not often. And that's, that's the polite answer, I'm really not, it's not, I'm not, I got the first, um, the, uh, the first reports I got for expenses for this year were in November, and then the first revenue one, um, reports I got were in January, and I just find it very difficult to work that way, I can't, I can't, I, I can't reconcile to anything, and I, so I wind up keeping my own, my own charts of absolutely everything that comes in, like they're color-coded and everything, and he helps me so that Nick and I can balance to each other, but still, I need to be able to balance to the finance department, so I may, and, and make sure that it's actually going to the correct, like, uh, you know, um, fiscal year and things like that, because there were some things that didn't, and because I didn't find out about them until November, we, it was too late to, to change that, so if we can have them with every month, um, then that would be helpful, because I do this every day, as soon as I have an expense or revenue, this gets added the same day to my ledger. Now, I get that this, I, I mean, I have th, these, and then I have individual pages for every single one of my line items that I keep myself, but I still need to, but I still need to balance to what you have, because otherwise I can't, it went in the wrong fiscal year, and it's expensive to lose that much money. I can't, I can't afford it, so, um, that would be exceedingly helpful. And Katie, you are right in saying, we are, I mean, we're already, we're not yet into our allocation subsidy or whatever we're calling the amount that was given to us by the town last year, right? We're still, I don't, um, sixty, approximately sixty thousand to the good. Will we go at some point, will it reverse, and will we go into the allocation? Yes, but we've cer- certainly made, um, well, you don't see it there, but right now, we've got over three hundred thousand in, in revenue, or approximately three hundred thousand. So yeah, that's a far cry from one fifty-three. And then, yes, if I can have these reports, quite honestly, quite honestly, it was very difficult to come up with a revenue figure for next year, when I couldn't reconcile with anybody what it was this year. And that is the, that's the bottom line, if I can't see it, then, then it doesn't exist to me. I, it exists, it exists from my deposits and my forms, but unless I see it coming from the finance department, then it doesn't, and that's, that's what I need. To, to, uh, that's just what I need, if, I would appreciate.
All right, so we got, thank you, we got two, we got two issues here, one is, we do have to talk about this allocation slash subsidy, I don't have the numbers in front of me, so I heard you say three hundred was the revenue, so, um, I think we should talk about that as the board and what, what, what we are comfortable with, and then, um, Leslie, can we get her some, some more frequent reporting, is that, what's going on?
What's going on is, when Rowena came on board, I was able to free up more time that I can start preparing that information for the department heads, and I told them initially that I guaranteed them a report once a quarter, and I was working my way towards monthly.
Okay, okay, so, um.
Just recently, you had expressed that we weren't going to get it unless there was a discrepancy, but we wouldn't.
No, that is incorrect, Janice.
Well, okay, we can.
Told you, you would not receive confirmation on your credit card revenue report if there were no discrepancies between what you submitted and what Rowena reconciled.
But I still want to see reports with year-to-date information, so I know where, um, I know where we are and where those, where the revenue is being put, and I need the same thing for, I need, need the same thing for my expenses, because things unfortunately went to the wrong year, and that's, that's fine, things happen and mistakes occur. But in order to move forward appropriately, I think I want to have it on a monthly basis, because I can't, I have to make sure we reduce, whether it's my mistake, your mistake, who, or whoever has it, we need to make sure that we, we minimize those as much as possible.
I don't disagree with you.
Okay.
And I will make sure that, I know you're coming into your heavy purchase season for summer camp supplies, so I will see that you have those expense reports on a monthly basis.
Okay, thank you.
All right, can I ask a question about this report, because it has your program fee revenue year-to-date as of two weeks ago?
Um.
The big sheet?
This one.
Yes.
Okay, so what you're gonna see, though, here's the, here's the, here's the rub, okay, because this is, and I.
The top sheet.
The top sheet.
Is the revenue. And it says that your revenue as of February twenty-eighth was one seventy-six, nine seventy-four, eighty-five.
Okay, what, it, we're, there's, I included, because I need to report what we actually brought in for summer, summer camp, okay? There was fifty-five thousand dollars that was posted to last fiscal year instead of this fiscal year. But I still made that money, so I have to put it in my, I have to put it in my totals, regardless of why it got posted to the wrong fiscal year, I still need to include it here. I also included the grant money, because I have to account for it somewhere.
The grant money is in another.
I know, but, I know, but for my records here, I have to be able to see in, I have to see in one place or two places, but I have to see that, the money that we actually had coming in, whether it be from the state, whether it be from credit cards, or whether it be from checks or cash, there has to be some way for me to see how much our revenue is, so that I can, I can reconcile with it, and we can make sure it gets allocated to the appropriate fiscal year.
This number would only be for your collections as fees, this would not include your grant, is this a number that you can base your estimate for next year on for?
Well, technically, the one seventy-six, you mean?
Yes.
I'm gonna guess, and that's why I came with a low revenue number, no, I, I honestly, thi- this right here, I don't believe includes the fifty-five thousand for the credit cards, Leslie, right? The one that got posted into the.
Thirty-six thousand dollars in revenue posted in the month of June from credit cards. It was posted as June, it was not take, not, it.
It was in last year?
It was posted in last year, as last year's revenue, thirty-six thousand dollars. All the cash that came in for summer camp for twenty-three is still sitting in the prepaid account, the journal entry has not been made to transfer it, because I have not finished the audit adjusting entries, and I cannot move that until they are finished.
And that couldn't have been done until after tonight.
That's, and that's great, okay, and that's great.
That's where we are.
I, and I hear you, I hear you, except for, I'm just saying, I'm, I need to come from a place of confidence that the money is there, right? And then, I just, I'm sorry, yes, I mean, it, it, uh, because technically, I'm assuming that this one seventy-six, uh, one hundred and seventy-six thousand is missing that, right? So if you add it in the fifty thousand or so, then that would change, if you come in with a hundred and seventy-six and then raise mine, raise my revenue to one, uh, to three fifty-two, then it might seem like a big leap, right? But if you add, actually add in what should have been in this fiscal year, then it's more reasonable. Just saying, I'm just, you know what, I'm not a finance director, and I'm not an auditor. I'm the Park and Rec Director, and I really have to rely on numbers that I see, which is why I have this, because if I don't see it on a report, and then if I see it that we have, or we're supposed to have it, and I don't see it anywhere on a report, whether it be a journal entry or whatever it is, then it's hard for me, it just makes them more difficult for me, and I don't mean to sound difficult, but the, it, the, if it, if we hadn't made mistakes, then me, I would still, I would still want to see it, I, I, I have to admit. I, 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 um, balance to Jen and, and our payroll every two weeks, we do it, we talk about it, boom, there it is. And it, I just feel like, because either one of us could make a mistake, anybody can, then I would like to see it, I just don't see why, particularly if we're gonna go to a new system soon, and, and it's a software program, wouldn't we be able to get this information on a timely basis, just so that we're all sure we're all on the same page?
That's part of why we are changing.
Wonderful, and that's great, but if I have to.
Where we are.
No, and, but you know what, and I'm just gonna, now, I'll just say it, and I'm not trying to be difficult, but if I need to make sure that my reporting is done by a certain time, and I have to do it, and we are very busy, then everybody's really busy, that's what everybody says, and that's true. But if I'm doing it, I think we all need to just do it so that we can get it done, and we all have confidence in what we have.
Do you, do you understand why this number was adjusted up?
Which number?
Your, the fees, the revenue.
Revenue, of course I do, but do you have any idea now why I didn't come in with a high number? I mean, eh, how, if you're missing all of this money, and I'm not trying to belabor the point, we can all post things for the wrong place, but I'm sorry, I know that it.
No, this is based on, excuse me, but, and then we're done with this, but this number is based on your expenditure budget for next year.
Mm-hmm.
Period. It's based only on three lines of your expenditure budget for next year, it doesn't include the director's salaries, it doesn't include supplies. It only includes the three major.
Right, and I did that, so.
And they're program-related.
Mm-hmm. Now, if you looked at, if you look at the front page of mine, if, be, the way I did this was just so you can add things back, and we won't be very long, but, you know, if I have concerns, then I might as well tell you what they are now. Um, so we went through outside contractors. For purposes of this discussion now, and the two hundred and six thousand, six forty-six that you see for salaries for twenty-three, twenty-four, it does not include anything but summer camp, rec room, and, um, and Bethany Hoops. I got rid of all of the programs that we were hoping to do, uh, to, to try to run for next year, be, and that's listed, the shortlist of programs eliminated next fiscal year, we can add some of them back, but because I didn't have some answers, I didn't, I didn't add them in because, because there have been a lot of discussions, and I just wanted to make sure that we're all on the same page. You can leave it at two hundred and six, and that's simply for rec room, summer camp, and Bethany Hoops, or we can start adding some of these back, and I might have better success adding them back, as long as I can utilize the program or the expense line items the way I used to be able to do it. So if we're saying I can do that, and I can start doing some of this differently. And then the last one is, just so we throw it out there, because, and it's not to be contentious, but it was a topic of conversation from a couple of people now, okay? Just so that everybody understands, we do get, we do get paid, we do assess fees, um, charge fees for many of our programs, but there are a lot of things that we do hear that don't, um, that we are community service sorely at it, all right? I'm just saying, if it goes to a, if it comes to a self-funded situation, obviously Bethany Hoops goes, because it doesn't make enough money, would I hate to see that happen, of course, I would hate to see that happen. The lifeguards, other than, I don't know how you all, um, developed the, um, or calculated the increases in, um, the lodge and pavilion rentals. Did any of that go towards any lifeguards, because all I know is, they cost about eleven thousand dollars for the year, and the parking permits, which I would say we should go directly towards them, um, totaled about three thousand seventy-five. Now, we may get more by the end of the year, but typically, it had been customary that when they come at the end of the fiscal year, it goes into the next fiscal year for July first. If you want that to be different, you need to tell me that. But anyway, there's obviously a gap of money, so if it's not funded and added to the number that you see on the front page, then it's not, then it's not funded, and we have tried to do things like swimming lessons and things like that, and you actually lose money on that, so I'm just throwing that out there. If you were to look at, um, you were to look at tennis, basketball, pit, well, I replace all of that equipment, the nets and things like that. Just saying, if you haven't made an accommodation for that with the updated rates in, for the lodge and the pavilion, that should be added into, somewhere into expenses in, in the front. The Lions Club, we do, we work with them, we were just talking about doing some programs with them, typically, we do not, um, we don't take the money, they, they use it as fundraisers, they want to do movie nights again, maybe cornhole contests and things like that. I generally not only volunteer my time, but if they have bingo, we ha, we don't, made a donation of some, um, prizes and everything. That would go. Bethany Community School, we do a lot of different things, somebody just came to me saying that they needed help with a program for after-school, they don't have enough people to help. Would I help, or would we send counselors to do that? Well, of course, I'm not gonna say no, because they need help, there's forty-five kids who signed up for a program, and there's nobody to help them. But I wouldn't be able to do that, just like with senior programming, we actually budgeted, budgeted two, two thousand to two, twenty-five hundred for them to do different programs with them, or kind of piggyback off of things that Robin does for them. That wouldn't, I don't make money with that, I just, I, I help enhance programs that exist already. So I'm just saying that if any of these items, these are the types of things that people may not think about, they may not realize they exist, BAA is one of them. Um, uh, BAA, we help, we pay to have the infield broom, that's right now, and it doesn't include the remainder of the sprint or any of the spring that's coming up, we paid about twenty-five hundred out. We don't get any money for that, anything that they charge for teams, they keep, and I'm assuming they give back to the community by way of scholarships and things like that. We don't get any money for that. Anything that they charge for teams, they keep, and I'm assuming they give back to the community by way of scholarships and things like that. Um, Harvest Festival. I mean, I mean, you, people joke about it, but. I have, usually that was always considered money in, money out. I don't know how it's considered now, but I spend a ton of time on Harvest Festival. In inordinate amount of time, and that is time that if we don't fund, eh, you know. Or I'm supposed to be self-funded, we'll say, would go on, eh, eh, you know, for me, cause I can't. You, you, it, it costs a lot of money. My time costs a lot of money, so I'm just saying that for the purposes of the conversation. I think it's really important that everybody understands that these are the sorts of things that would go if people talk about us being self-funded. Yeah, and it's your decision. You can do what you want, but that's the only thing, so. That's where we are. If you want, the two hundred and six thousand does not include the funding for the, for the lifeguards. It doesn't include, um, well, it doesn't include senior programming. Now, because I had to reduce one of these, some of my programs, so that would go under programs. I would not go under, um. Pay, you know, pa- payroll, because I don't assign staff to them. Um, and the B A would have to be added back in, and it's gonna be, um. I can give you the, what I estimate to be, you know, what's, what would happen for the spring based on last spring. But that is in salaries, because one of our counselors or two of them actually do it. So I took everything out, and then I figured you can add it all apart as you, as you see that. Questions, anybody? Alright. Right, thanks. Thank you for your time, everybody. Alright. Do you wanna stay or wanna, they're talking about your other things?
We want to try to get it done tonight.
Well, I just wanna give the heads up, because I think we were planning a midnight run. Um, and I only booked this, but I only scheduled this until nine, so if they get bounced up, I'm gonna have to run in my office and, and reschedule another link. Um, so Kathy and Eric, Katie, if you happen to get bounced at nine o'clock, just be patient. I will run and reset, uh, a new link. For an extent, extension of the meeting.
Okay.
I tried to go and redo it just now, but it will not allow me to edit the time, so this potentially may shut down in five minutes.
Okay. Um, let's see, where are we? Why aren't you showing me? Um. Okay, year to date and budget. And. You wanna do the, um, H C first? Can you do it in a couple of sentences? Uh, three minutes?
Yep.
This is concerning the employee retirement plan, having one we've talked about it.
Alright, a request for investment services provider was issued in January. At the review of the submitted proposals. Interviews were conducted by Sharon, Steve Massey, and myself. With several of the applicants and background due diligence was done through Investment Advisors Public Disclosures. Their website, which tells us all the. Outstanding pending and pa- past violations of all investment advisors. It is my recommendation that we award the contract to Stephen Michaels and Smith Brothers Financial LLC of Blasdenberry, Connecticut. We feel he is best suited to transition our current plan and meet the needs of the town employees for years to come.
I would like for somebody to move that we so award that contract.
I'll move that.
Okay, was that Katie?
Katie.
Okay, and John Bravasky seconded for discussion purposes. So, so this was the company that I think, um, let's see, I mentioned at our last meeting that we felt most comfortable with. Because they were best able to deal with both a small organization, and they were a little bit more flexible in terms of, um. What, what the costs would be. We are not in compliance. I think everybody knows. We are not in compliance with what we're supposed to be doing. We need to add the, uh, employee contribution portion. I would like to see us, us do this. Question? Name? Anybody? Uh, John, do you know what you're talking about? Even remember, um, the current pension is a series of, uh, annuities purchased by the town. On behalf of the, the individuals, and there's nothing in there where they can make their own. Contributions into a retirement plan, and they're, um, they need to have. A series of potential funds that they could and have, uh, investment advice.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, we're supposed to. We've been in, out of compliance for twelve years.
Just no more discussion.
I just have a question, um, although I'm in favor of it. Is, is there a cost to the town for this, like?
Yes.
Yes. How much is it? How much is it, for example?
Um, he has offered two different structures. One is seventy five basis points. It was a flat fee service, seventy five basis points. Or ten thousand dollars. If you calculate out. Um, seventy five basis points based on the assets that are available at the moment, it is less expensive than the ten thousand flat fee. Even though the ten thousand, he will lock in for three years, but the nice caveat on his, um. Pricing proposal sheet said it was customizable and negotiable, so Sharon and I will be negotiating.
And Steve.
And Steve. Yeah, cause Steve was extremely instrumental in making this happen. Cause he knew the questions to ask, and he knew where to go to research the firms.
He is a financial advisor. He took that profession, so.
Thank you.
Anything else? Those in favor?
Okay.
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, so now. The, the, can you roll the financials and budget in together, or do you want to first explain why you wanna set a public hearing date? Already, why we wanna get it done tonight?
Well, I would like to get a hearing date set tonight for earl sooner rather than later. Because I will be on vacation the middle of April. I will be here for the Board of Finance meeting, but I will be out of the country the week after. And I would prefer to have the budget hearing prior to my vacation. So that we are not pressed for time based on the outcome from the budget hearing to get everything together for the annual, for the town annual meeting.
There's a timing also with the mailing, because it has to be no less than five days.
Which means essentially, we have to do it tonight.
The, the date has to be picked tonight, because it will have to be mailed depending on the date by.
The budget, you need the budget.
We need the budget first.
So, so anyway, that's why I was saying.
What are you proposing?
Oh, you don't have it.
Oh, no, no, I mean, either for, oh, for a date.
Is it in the attachment? I don't see it.
No, it is not, no.
Okay.
No, it is not.
As late as possible.
Well, school is on, is on vacation the week of April ten, correct?
Yes.
Does that take a lot of people out of town for the week?
Maybe. I'm gonna be out of town that week.
Okay.
Is that a week we should shy away from to hold this?
We have in the past.
Okay, we have in the past, alright. So you're potentially looking the week of, or, it's, we would be looking at the week of April third, and the selections meeting would be the fourth, that's that Tuesday, so potentially either that Wednesday or. Thursday, but are there any, any zoning?
Yes. Planning on zoning would be on Wednesday.
So you're looking at basically the sixth.
Either Thursday.
That'd be three weeks, that's three weeks from tomorrow.
Three weeks from tomorrow.
And it would have to be mailed at least. By the twenty seven. Hmm. If I trust the postal service. Potentially by the twenty, Friday, the twenty fourth, we wanna hope that it's there.
Okay, so that gives us about ten days. To get it ready.
Correct, and to the printer to be mailed.
And to the printer, so we, we would need to be formatting that and so on. So what, so what we started with. Today was looking at a two million dollar deficit and a forty mil rate. Then with the adjustments that Leslie outlined, we, we brought it down to. Um, what would be. Without a subsidy, a mil rate of. Thirty seven point eight. If we wanted to keep it at thirty six, oh, our current, current calculations, assuming we make no changes to this. To the sheet, to the Board of Finance column, so, uh, out on the right, uh. It would be a, a million dollars, and a million dollars off a just under six million dollar general fund is gonna bring us down below where we ought to be. Never mind that we'd have to make it up again next year, so. Once you're gonna have that, so you could, I can, yeah, we can play with it. Um, we have a little worksheet where we can put a subsidy in and then see what. It would, it would do, just. So we know if we wanna do that, but while she's doing that.
What's everybody's gut reaction? I think we should leave the way, what you're proposing.
The thirty seven eight?
Yeah, I'm, I'm for that as well, because we're just gonna dig ourselves another hole for next year.
Okay.
It's not that bad of a town.
No, no, I mean, when I was coming here tonight, I was thinking we were gonna have.
I thought you'd like this better.
Yeah. And it's cause the economy keeps going like it is, you're not gonna have any extra money.
That's the thing, so next, yes, I'm really worried that we're, we're gonna.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm good with what you're proposing.
Okay, alright.
I just have a question. What, what is, what is it that, that the proposed is? What document should I be looking at to see the?
It's one that you don't have. I'm sorry, we put it together this afternoon. Um, I believe that Leslie's trying to put it up as a shared document.
Can you give me a quick summary on what, what you're cutting?
Um, alright, we, uh, what we put together was, um. A budget of expenditures at twenty six, three fifty, six fourteen, forty four. Um, the total required from taxation would be twenty two, four twenty eight, two ninety five, forty four. And using a collection rate of ninety eight point five, which is what we've used in the last couple of years. Uh, first, we took out the, um, statutory maximum motor vehicle. Then to see what we were gonna have to raise by property taxes, then using the collection rates, increased the amount, and then. Uh, from, um, let's see. In- increased it to, to take into account the collection rate, because we wouldn't collect a hundred percent. And then, um, you, the little worksheet has the grand list for both real estate, well, actually for all three. Types of property, um, net of exemptions, and so. We just.
Three adjustments, uh. To cap, um, the capital items.
Mm-hmm.
And then, uh, the public works.
The one out of, out of public works and the increase in revenue for, um. For parking wreck.
So.
Increasing.
Katie didn't hear that.
Did you decrease the? Uh, oh, so you increased the parks and rec revenue estimations? Did you cut their expenditures at all or no?
No, we were going to do, we were figuring the one or the other.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. So the revenue covers, um, let's see, what is it? It's their salaries, um, no, it's on this page, it, it's three categories.
Can you explain those three that it was real easily?
Yeah, it's just three of them.
Out of public work, she took out. Two fifty.
Okay, I can't, I can get rid of that, but let's just pull through. Out of public works, I took two hundred and fifty thousand out of, um, major roadwork. The button, the, the ask was four hundred. I took two fifty out and made it one fifty.
I moved it up, is that how you know?
Yes, that's perfect. Cause that way I can bring it over here, yeah.
So that brought it to one fifty, and that, yet there's three hundred thousand in the capital line.
Three hundred and fifty.
Three hundred and fifty in the capital line.
There, and four hundred in next year.
And four hundred in next year, so, um, Don said that they can work with that, and that, that won't be a problem. We have to work, barring some major road.
It's less than the ask, but however. If I understand correctly what's going on in our capital research, we may actually still have some more there that could be.
It's a big problem, and we're gonna have to look at it.
We'll have to do something, but there are, yeah, another trip, right, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, and the other thing, the three, the three categories for the, that were increased.
Okay, um, the, the three with parking wreck, is that what you're referring to?
Well, that was Katie's question.
Okay, Katie's question, three items that I included in the revenue figure are hi- hi- can you see the share screen?
No.
No.
Shoot, it didn't share.
You're not sharing, yeah.
No, it, let, let's see here.
Oh, it's the new building, new meeting. You have to go into the new meeting. Or are they in the old meeting?
That's, that's the new meeting, but no, we're trying to go here, I'll go.
They're still in the old meeting.
I didn't change meetings.
Okay. Then. Um.
There. Yeah, is that what I wanted?
Um, up at the top, you, you should be able to share screen.
You see it now?
Something's happening, yep.
Yeah. I got it. Technology, thank goodness everyone else.
Yeah.
Oh, you wanna move them over to the right, or in the middle?
Wait. Make them smaller?
Alright, so what the three, the three items highlighted, the two ninety six, the twenty six, and the thirty. They equate to the parking rec salaries, even though it's really not a salary, it's the counselor wages. Um, the program expense and the summer camp. I added those three figures together. To come up with a new revenue figure at the top for parking rec of three hundred and fifty two thousand.
Okay, so you're forcing it to net? I just wanna make sure I understand.
Yes, I am. I'm forcing those three lines to net.
But not overall to net, not even close.
Why? What other lines make up parks and rec?
Well, because then it still leaves them. With, okay, the one twenty seven, the one seventeen for the director salaries.
Oh, yeah, 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 okay.
Okay, and the office expense, and, you know, the other miscellaneous expenses in there.
Maintenance, annex repairs. Equipment replacement, none of that is, uh, is covered by the revenue.
Pretty much, just the director salaries, that's, because the other ones are so small, right?
Right, well, yeah.
The others add up to about ten thousand dollars, so it's about a hundred and twenty seven thousand dollars. That the town would be funding.
Actually, it would be less if they get that grant for the summer camp, for the special education teachers.
That is correct.
But it also.
Right.
Go ahead.
The grant also, um, gets direct expenses as well, so if they don't get the grant, their expenses will go down too. The grant also gets direct expenses as well, so if they don't get the grant, their expenses will go down too.
Yeah, okay. Um, well, if they run that program, they're going to have all, they'll need the special ed teachers and such.
But they won't run the program if they don't get the grant.
That is correct.
Probably.
They should find out tomorrow.
Need to do something tonight.
Well, she will find out if she's going to get the grant tomorrow.
She'll find out how much.
Criteria for.
And the price.
And how much she will be getting.
Okay.
Now, what we, what we.
That's not a material amount, so we could make a change. We could adopt a budget and then.
What?
Make non-material.
What I can, what we can do for. Janice, is I can come down here to this line here.
Artist?
Yeah, now right above it, and I can insert. A new row. And call it. Grant expenditures, so that she can see exactly how much she spends on that grant. But she would have to. Give us the details with every payroll she submits, that it was grant related and not regular payroll.
But John has made it very clear tonight that all grants have to work that way.
Correct.
Things have to be written off directly from the grants.
Yes.
So.
Every grant should have its own expense line, unfortunately.
Yep, so you could put it there and then she could see it, that would help her out as well.
Yes, absolutely, it can be done, and I offered to do that for this fiscal year, if she gave me the detail, I would back it out. And put it on a grant expenditure line.
We need to find the revenue piece of it.
Absolutely, we didn't have, but.
So those are, those are the changes, and those changes actually brought it down to a. What would have been a deficit of nine seventy four, two seventy nine, and twenty cents, oh, there was also the adjustment to the amity appropriation. I don't think you were here for that, so. But the discussion here at the table, Katie and Kathy, was that perhaps we should just go with the. The budget as is, at least go to hearing with it. And then.
Thirty seven point eight was the amount?
Yes, thirty seven point eight mils.
And we're at thirty six.
We are at thirty six oh.
This is for Katie's benefit, I now have the mill rate calculation page up.
Okay, so um, we were at thirty six, we're going to thirty seven eight, I think I I did receive that. Picture that someone sent to me, sorry, thank you. I I I think we should proceed with with this, at least to go to budget hearing, so that we can see how the town feels about it, you know. Most of the increases from what I reviewed were, most of them were in the town. Section, they weren't in.
Yes.
In the board of ed, so I mean, a lot of it has to do with people. So, yeah.
Yes.
We have to be able to defend that.
Well.
Leslie, are you gonna send us this report we're looking at here?
Yes, I will, um, the one that the mill rate calculation.
Yeah.
Kathy has a hard copy of it already, Katie, I'll see if you get it electronically. This is where we were originally before I made the adjustments on the mill rate and what the subsidy would have to be.
I think you're not sharing what you think you're sharing, right now we're looking at the.
We're looking at the report again. It's the Excel.
Yeah, we're looking at the Excel right now.
Yeah, it is.
Okay.
It it has a different result.
Oh, on the bottom?
Oh, it has different, it has the original requested expenditures.
How many columns are you looking at?
A through N.
They're looking at the other report that was up.
It has the BOF proposal columns that.
They're looking at that, alright, so the second, the second one didn't share.
Maybe if we close this one, can we, we'll see, yeah. Now, it has to come from her. And she has to close. Can you minimize the document and then show the other one?
That's what I'm trying to do. Does it come up now?
No. I don't know what's this. So while we're waiting for that to go.
For the date for hearing.
Well, first of all, are we pretty much agreed, we're not, are we agreed that we are not going to change the budget? As presented here?
I think so.
Yeah.
So. Somebody make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, John. To adopt, adopt the budget as presented as the Board of Finance proposal as of. Three fifteen, twenty twenty three. And set. A budget hearing date for.
Six.
April sixth. Thursday, April sixth, twenty twenty three.
Oh.
Does that have to be before?
Hold on a second, that is, Good Fridays the next day, you know, she, that's right, that's Monday, Thursday.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, the only thing we could do is potentially. Do it on the Tuesday and and reschedule our Board of Selectment meeting.
We can do that.
We can do that. And then we would have to have a special board.
Well, we'd have to have one anyway to call a meeting, so. Call a budget hearing. Yeah, I have to do it on Tuesday.
Yes, you are going to have to do that. No, actually, I don't.
But this is our meeting, do we need to?
We can have a meeting beforehand or afterwards.
Yeah, we could do it, even though there's planning and zoning on that Wednesday, we potentially could do.
Do it on Tuesday, that's gonna back us up another couple of days.
No, if the mailing is gonna be.
Will be tight.
It's gonna be tight.
Mailing's gonna have to be done early next week.
Yes.
We got this new document, just so you know. We also have the bulletin that's going to be going out. So we can also potentially put a notice in the bulletin as far as the public hearing for the.
That that causes the mailing?
It does not, but we at least are getting notice out that way, and we get the mailing out as long as it's not.
To get it on the.
No less than five days prior to the.
Okay.
The meetings, so we can put it in the. Make it like one of the banners on the beginning of the.
Some of us aren't gonna get a lot of sleep between now and then, but, okay.
It's, it's overrated. Just me.
Budget presentation, you know.
Okay, so now potentially we're talking about the fourth.
Okay, four?
April fourth, April fourth is a Tuesday.
Okay.
Okay, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. What was that, Katie or Kathy?
Both.
Both.
She's unanimous. Okay, thank you very much. Now, can we just table the bulky waste?
Nope. I'll make the motion.
Thank you. You don't have to vote on table. Patrol issues, table till next month? Yes, no? Yeah, I decided even on a special meeting. Our regular meeting. Oh, wait a minute. Going back to things that we moved. To later in the meeting. We have five and number eight, five is an update on on grants. Most of this was was actually dealt with last week at the town. Moving everything around, all the things that that we had recommended. To happen. Do you want? Details, or you want the good news about Rosa and the good news about Cabrera's?
Yeah, I think if you could just tell us exceptions, anything that was an issue or any updates, I think.
Nothing was at the town meeting, everything that was recommended was passed.
Thank you.
Yes, yes, everything on the town meeting call was approved.
I assume so.
Yeah, Don, you're scheduling work for the steep grant?
Yes, it should be starting next week.
And. We received confirmation this afternoon that the Cabrera funds are. Getting signatures at OPM that is being signed off on. So hopefully within the next week or two, we will see money. So we're hoping, we're hoping it's not reimbursement, and we're gonna get the funds upfront and we can start spending.
It's a good reason not to draw down the general fund.
Correct.
Yes.
And. And Rosa Delors, I've actually met, I was with Rosa Delor this afternoon, and the gentleman who's actually been helping us with this particular grant. Has said they are in final conversation with reconfiguring the actual title of the project, so that it will allow us. To work at the the two sites with the funds, so I'm just waiting on confirmation with that, but they're. They're in final conversation with that too, so. Yeah, and then we have another grant that's going in tomorrow, or it may have actually gone in this afternoon.
One today, one tomorrow.
We have, yes, one from Senator Murphy's office and one from Rosa Delor's office. Yes, and then we should find out about soon too, so. Have you submitted the roundtable yet, Don, or is it still in the developmental stage?
It's still in developmental stage, we haven't. Yeah, we're gonna come back with the the formats and stuff, right? You know.
Alright, so. We're still doing our best to get as much grant. Of money as possible to do.
General fund, because it's all, most of them are reimbursed, so.
With potential grants on some, I mean, not grants, matches.
Some are matching.
No, we're mostly reimbursing.
It depends. So the only thing left is the first selectments.
That is mine, you had you had two items in your packets, one was the. It had come up with discussion because of attendance and being able to get quorums for the meetings becoming more difficult, it would obviously have to be a proposed amendment. That would go to the town for any kind of approval, but Ben had put together a recommendation in your packet, there's a couple of papers. From him. Hopefully you have an opportunity to. Take a look at that. And, you know, I'm just thinking about myself.
Okay, so.
What's this recommendation?
Uh, to. Create alternate positions for the Board of Finance.
It was in your packet, it was a, was an attachment. In the packet, seven A. I, it had come up in conversation and I asked Ben to investigate. The proper verbiage for it. And if there was any specific criteria, because. We're statutory town. So.
Alright, I would suggest that we put this on the agenda of the next meeting, so that people have time to read it and. And think about it.
Okay, we will, obviously, you'll have to do the monitoring and.
Would somebody move to table?
And then second.
Alright, John Ford and then John Gavasky.
Okay, and the second item was also in your packet, which was brought to the. Uh, Board of Selectmen last week was the proposed burn training building behind the fire department. I did a letter, their their grant is also through Rosa Delor's office, a different. Department, but they all sort of funnel through her office and then get. Sent off to the respective departments. So theirs is due. Well, I think they're preparing it, because they're due like before nine o'clock tomorrow morning, so. The Board of Selectmen approved it last week, the the, you know, to kind of support them going forward to investigate it and. As you can see in the packet, there was, John Paul Garcia had done a whole survey. Of the property for them, and then there's also the information regarding the actual structure itself. And we did, you know, kind of have a conversation about like. Potential, how do they plan on funding it, we have questions about maintenance, insurance, and I am still waiting to hear back from our insurance. Uh, company, Irma, with regard to coverage, how something like this would be covered. I don't know. Katie or Kathy have this at all, was this provided to them in any?
I can run, I can just run through the.
Yeah, Leslie and Sharon put together another, some of the same questions, the fire department is putting the grant through Rosa Delor's office for potential funding. For this project. Like I said, I did a letter of support for them this morning, as the Board of Selectmen had approved it last week, so. Just sort of re- reiterated that fact in a letter. To, it was a generic mailbox email that it had to go to for Delor's office, community funded project. So, so, go ahead.
Yeah, so the the idea is there, they want to build this for for their use and to for revenue purposes. They want to put it on the airport property behind. The current firehouse. Uh, so. After listening to their presentation to the Board of Selectmen. I started thinking, well, wait a minute, we're budgeting, how do, how do we deal with this, because they weren't sure, like, whether the town would be the entity on the grant, or whether the fire department would. But they would own it and get the revenue from it. Uh, so I started going, wait a minute, this is getting a little. You know, nobody's really got answers to questions, so this is just a list of questions that I thought that we need, because we need to be able to. Look at the financial implications, because.
I thought they had mentioned that the the revenue could potentially go toward. Maintenance. Of the. Of the building, unless I misunderstood.
Yeah, I I think that a lot of things were not really clear. Because I. Did, I attended virtually, but I I attended and I looked at them, and their their intent is to. To build something that they can use for training and can let other departments use for training and that they would generate revenue, they would like to use grant funds. Um, it'll be on town property, so there were, there were questions about. And so Paul is looking into the insurance end of it, part of it is what entity is actually going to be responsible for the grant or for the construction.
And the maintenance.
And the maintenance, they said nothing about maintenance or operating costs, no budget, Katie, so that's. So the list, funding sources, funding amount, what are the grants matching or reimbursement, if there reimbursement, where's the money coming from?
Any revenue they create should cover all these costs first.
Well. Would any borrowing be involved in terms of annual operating cost, what the amount would be, what would be the source of that funding? We don't want to see that just end up being something else in their operating budget that we have to pay for.
Yeah.
Uh, we need to know what's gonna happen, maintenance and upkeep, not just day to day operations, who would do it, where would the funding come from? Insurance.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, please continue.
Insurance, liability and property damage, because we don't know what's gonna. Going to happen, other people use the airport, who knows? But this is a more intense use and it's going to have people from out of town using it, so. Uh, what would the level of use? Uh, what would the level of use be? How often would it be on weekend days? Would it be on weekdays? How would it impact other use of the airport property? And in terms of revenues, what would they expect the amounts to be? What would they, who would they be paid to? Would this actually be a genuinely self-sustaining piece of property? And when it stopped being self-sustaining, what would happen to it? We don't, we don't need another hanger.
No, from what I know, last week, they didn't even know how much it was gonna cost you. But it's replying for a grant tomorrow, obviously that, that must have been answered.
One never knows, you know?
Paul had put together something for them for the grant, and we just have not seen it yet.
That's what I'm saying.
He was gonna work on it for them.
But these are all budget issues.
Right.
They're budget questions for us that need to be answered. And if they're not answered, then where are they gonna get money for this? You know, I.
Well, the application for the grant is being put in under Stephanie Volunteer Fireman's Association. It is not being put in under the town. It is being put in under them. So it is their grant.
It's our property.
You know, it's our property.
Goes around. It, it just gets very complex. And I think for our purposes, we need.
I mean, I can certainly reach out to them tomorrow. I can, um, I will be out of the office for a little bit, but first thing in the morning, I can shoot. Uh, an email to Chief, uh, Kobo and Brent, and say, heard the discussion last night with the board of finance. I mean, they're just concerned about some of these items and how they would be.
The thing is that if they want any changes to our budget for next year, or to their operating budget, they have to bring them up at the hearing. It would be nice if they brought them up to us before the hearing.
If these grants work the way they do, we're probably looking at fiscal year twenty-five. I'm just saying, the way these, we're still waiting for the money that we applied for eight months ago. So. By the time this grant gets awarded, if it gets awarded to them, they potentially will not get it till next spring, a year from now.
And if the numbers don't work, we double it to a town meeting.
It would have to go, well, let's put it this way. This whole thing would have to go through a hearing, it would have to go through planning and zoning, it would have to go through the proper process. So it's not something that we're just gonna carte blanche and it.
I'm concerned with us having dollar numbers that if they need to be added to this budget. Um, by way of the budget hearing, because that's the only way that, that it can be increased is.
I'll reach out to them tomorrow.
Yeah.
And I'll ask them if John Paul has provided them with any kind of breakdown of expenses, because they, they may have needed something for the, the grant. To put in, so, so, yeah, so I can follow up with them.
That would be.
And I'll use this, but I will, I get into an email of you.
Yeah. Ran out of time to type. If I did it with my computer, I was going to then have to offload it onto a flash drive, then have Leslie.
I know.
It just got, it was too complicated. Alright, so.
So, and basically, so that's where we are. Those were my two items, basically, where the, um. You know, the often it's, and the, uh, burned by themselves. I'm, I'm pretty much, that's it, alright.
Can I make one comment about the, um, the proposed, uh, fire burning building thing? Is there any way, um, that the excess revenue, if there is some after taking care of maintenance of the building, which I have no idea, because. I'd love to see a forecast of anticipated revenue, but is there any way that it can be used to cover the, um, paramedic, uh? And the, um, ambulance costs that we subsidize every year in the budget?
These grants are very specific, and you can only use them for what they are applied for. You cannot deviate from it at all.
No, I'm asking about. Revenue after it's completed.
Completed.
Well, my understanding from Brent at the Board of Selectmen meeting was any revenue that they generate. From other towns using this facility would go into a special fund for the maintenance and upkeep of the building.
Yes, but I'm hoping the revenue, uh, that they generate exceeds the maintenance cost of the building, otherwise.
Depends on the number of times that they rent it.
I know, I understand, but they need a business case, right? And. That doesn't sound like.
Okay, I don't know what they have paid to go to other towns, um, to use their training facilities, so there's, you know.
Additive list of questions.
Yes.
At first, I'd, I, I don't want to see it running every weekend, where we're renting it out forty-eight weeks a year and making crazy money, because now we have a burn.
Yeah, no, I mean, I don't know if they're.
It's not even fire, it's just a small little fire.
I mean, are there specifics that the town, the boards can put into place as, you know?
Right next to the salt tree.
Now, moving right along.
Alright, so we have one more thing we have to do before that motion that we're, we're all hoping for. We do need to go to accept the audit report. Did anyone have any additional comments on the audit? Okay, really, all of his findings happened. Before times, if you will. In the before times.
And he, and I, and he was very pleased with that we are only in mid-March and it's.
Done, 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 yeah. Could I have a motion to accept the audit then?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, so John and Lars, uh, any discussion? All in favor? Okay, that was.
I'd like to, I'm gonna abstain, Katie.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, she wasn't here for the presentation, so she's abstaining.
Oh, Katie's abstaining, sorry.
My only comment, my discussion was.
Kathy, I will see that you both have your own hard copy of the official audit. Okay, thank you.
Right, Katie, you had a comment?
No, you just addressed it, Leslie. I'd like to see, um, copies of the report and, uh, including his, you know, um, or her, excuse me, uh, comments provided with her for.
All there, yeah, okay, thank you. Now. We have a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, all favor.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
The Board of Finance.